Excuse me, just a chair please. Okay.
So currently with, because keep in mind that we don't have enough band teachers for every building, so they have to rotate. So it might work better in one building because of the time that the band teacher's there and the classes that the students are out of. But, so if someone's going in the afternoon at one school and the morning at another, they, it's the scheduling piece that is impacted. So it's not that perhaps principals aren't willing to reassess, but it would, it would, it would take a lot for us to really rework it, but if that's the committee's wishes, we certainly can look into that.
Could we look into other communities that have instrumental lessons in their schools? And how do they work it out? All of our surrounding communities seem to have successful programs. We should be able to accomplish the same thing. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Can I ask, just so I'm clear, so the, what you're proposing with the 21st Century program would be that the, the lessons would only be offered after school and that the transportation would be provided both getting the children to and from, so that they'd be getting transportation to the 21st Century site, but then they'd also, at the conclusion, be given transportation back to their, their home? And it would be, so we'd be utilizing the, the same three full-time teachers? Is that correct? Because it would only...
So we've looked at, Carolyn's looked at, we could stipend instrumental band instructors who would like to do it in the after-school program, so it might not be the exact three teachers, it's anybody in the district who would be able to teach instrumental music, would be offered the opportunity to have a stipend to work in the after-school program teaching.
So your savings then is from eliminating the three positions, not just from shifting it to 21st Century funds? Is that...
No, correct. So the 21st Century funds would, they're grant-funded, so it would cover the cost of the stipends and the transportation and the programming that, you know, would take place.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. May. Can I make a motion that we have, have the administration look into restructuring the program as opposed to cutting the teachers?
Second, Mr. Nada.
I'll second it, yeah.
All in favor? Roll call, we'll do the roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
No.
Mr. Hui?
Yes.
Ms. Ley?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one nay, approved.
Just a, another question related to that. The three current members, it is my understanding that they are all qualified to also teach music, so they would be, they would have bumping rights. So could you also include what the actual savings would be? Because these are three senior teachers, you're not, their salaries are not equivalent to bumping someone who's fairly new in the program.
That's it, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. So in addition, there was a request by Ms. Darty and other members around the, the two positions, the social work positions, the reductions. So it, we provided for you a report on those social work reductions. The district social work position was cut mid-year along with other key positions during the FY19 budget cycle in order to help address our budget challenges district-wide. The district social worker serves as a lead for the district-wide crisis team, serves as a conduit between the schools, the city, and families in times of crisis, is facilitator of the district crisis planning team. In addition, that administrator also provided monthly professional development and supervision for all the social workers district-wide. Also wrote, wrote and managed grants that afforded us as a district additional mental health professionals for the schools and social emotional learning and mental health training for all staff. At present, the former district social worker is serving in the role of coordinator of safety for the district, which is a two-year grant-funded position. In this role, she oversees the safety planning and initiatives district-wide, which were part and parcel of her current role. So that's one key aspect that she's maintained in that role. In addition, in the absence of a district social worker position for this next school year, the additional duties of planning and facilitating district-wide professional development and supervision, the supervision would be designed very differently, so that it would be partnering, instead of the current district social worker working directly with staff, it would be set schedules for district teams to pull together and meet with a younger professional and a more seasoned veteran. So, and those, those schedules would be set up. And then there would be a stipend for one of the district, for one of the school social workers, similar to a lead teacher role, to provide the, the monthly professional development and work, work with our coordinator for safety in some means. This is not a perfect solution, but it certainly would afford us the opportunity to, to maintain some of those valuable needed services in the interim. Should the additional funds become available, it is our recommendation as a leadership team to reconstitute the district social worker position into a coordinator of social emotional learning and mental health and eliminate the social work stipend that we had proposed in this recommended budget. Over the course of the past year, we've had a task force looking at the state standards for social emotional learning. That task force has done an immense amount of work, working closely with the state and the Excel network. And we really need someone in a role to be able to launch this important work and make sure that we have something pre-K through 12 for all students to ensure that they succeed. In addition, the other cut that we recommended was a refugee social worker. There were two refugee social worker positions that were in an elementary counseling grant, which ended in 2018. One of those positions was maintained in the 2019 budget. This position supports refugee families upon their arrival to Lowell Public Schools and helps them acclimate, acclimate to school, to the city, to the American lifestyle. And so over the course of the past two years, the new families arriving to the district has decreased. And although the number appears to be high, if you look at the, the refugee arrival sheet that is attached to the report, although the number does appear to be high, it's really important for the committee and all those who are listening to know that they represent families that have been with us from one to five years. They retain their refugee status. So, so some of these children have been with us for five years and their families. At, today, we verified with the International Institute that we've had five new refugee students in 2018, 19. So that, so that, that is, that is not to say that a refugee family coming to our schools after five years is fully acclimated and not in need of services, but we also do have our school-based social workers in the schools that can provide that support if, you know, this position is not cut, so, is cut. So in addition, we also have the coordinator for English language education, Dr. Palace, who will continue to provide supports to these families upon their arrival, and she works very closely with the International Institute. So that is what we would, and additionally, Ms. Darty asked for information, I, I'm not sure if it was Ms. Darty or Ms. Martin, asked for information about, do we have any projections for what's to come? And in communication with the International Institute, they report not having any refugee numbers to share at this time, as they have had in the past. And they are not expecting notification of such, nor are they anticipating large numbers of additional refugees, given the current governmental policies and procedures that are in place at this time. So it is our recommendation at this time that, given, you know, the numbers that are reduced dramatically over the, the last few years, and it was the impetus really for writing the grant several years back because there was such a need. And so right now, the numbers are much lower. I'll answer any questions if anyone has any.
How many social workers do we have at each school? And what is the average caseload that these social workers are dealing with? Because it still amazes me, the notifications we get from every school in this city about students' mental health issues. And if, you know, those are the ones that, that need to get taken out. So do we have numbers of...
So we have 41, but if we removed those two social workers, it'd be 39.
And they're all at, so we have, that's the average of like one and a half at a building?
Sue, do you want to speak to it?
I believe that we have a Title I social worker at each school, and then the special ed. social worker is shared, no?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So the special ed. social workers aren't part of those numbers, so we have additionally special ed. social workers in, in our schools as well. So those are our Title I social workers.
It, it just seems to me that we, you know, we should be looking to be adding social workers, not subtracting social workers.
I agree with you, but the, the position that we currently have that services only a few of our schools in the district, the way it's set up currently, that's our recommendation.
Ms. Ley?
Just a quick... Not sure if I, if anyone could answer the question, but just looking at the number here, I, I understand that Afghanistan, and we have, we have refugee from Afghanistan, from Iraq, et cetera, but from Thailand and Vietnam, how, I mean, how would you, if, I know you know the definition of refugee, what, what do they have to go through to be a refugee?
So these, this is defined by the International Institute as to whether there are refugee families that are coming and being resettled here. There, you are correct, there is a, there are families and students that we service that are immigrants to the United States and speak English, languages other than English that we, that are not included in these numbers. The, the, the families that are identified by the International Institute are through resettlement, and those are, the students that are in our school system are depicted here, and those, again, are classified specifically as refugee students. We then have students that are, have migrated to the country and have second language needs that are different from the categories here.
No, I'm just surprised to see Vietnam and Thailand as classified as refugee at this time.
But it's that organization as opposed to other organizations? There is a difference because of things like that, you know?
Good, good question, but Madam Superintendent, the one thing you should ask, in the, the decision-making process, are you making these decisions alone, or are you working in groups to make these decisions with input from principals?
No, we're not making these decisions in isolation. So we're having conversations with staff, and we, we've met with our leaders, and we've also compiled all the data to, to be able to present. It was, the, the decisions that we're making tonight, we're not taking lightly. We wouldn't be here making those recommendations if the budget was such, but that there are some things that we look at and we say, if we had another position, would that be the position we would have? And so in this case, this is a position that doesn't have the numbers that it did when it initially was instituted.
I just brought that up because I think it's important, especially for the public, to know, these decisions aren't made lightly, and this is the best way to provide us information, information that's been gathered, you know, with input from principals, teachers, or different organizations within the city, because we don't have an unlimited budget, and we have to deal with these issues. So I'm comfortable with that. Ms. Darty?
I thank you, Your Honor. So I just want to make sure I understand, because I think the smart way to approach the budget, which I'm, I, I fully believe that's what you're doing, is to look at efficiencies that make sense. So if I understand the district social worker role, you're really looking for a different kind of job description for that role. You mentioned a coordinator of social emotional learning, that's going to really provide the biggest bang that we need in our schools around the social and emotional health of our students. Where we have a sense that we might be getting more money for the state, I would rather just make that change and keep that position in the budget, because I really, in good conscience, can't see, you know, I mean, I understand with the refugee one, you know, like the numbers aren't holding up, and given the current climate nationally, that probably is going to hold pretty stable. So to let go of that one because the grant money is gone, I understand that, but to let go of a district-wide, someone who's going to help our staff with the professional development, training around the social emotional needs of our kids, I just don't see how we could possibly go there. So if I am understanding correctly, we're talking about changing this role to a coordinator role. And I would just want to do that and keep it on the budget, because, I mean, are we expecting that we're going to get more money that we could then maybe afford this role? Or are we still trying to meet?
Madam, we have to meet the budget, Madam Superintendent.
So, thank you. I, I would ask if, if you, if we could continue to provide you the reports, and then we also have a couple of recommendations for the committee to consider, based on the current, you know, forecasts of the budget. And then we can probably make those decisions at that time, depending on all the cuts that we brought forward, and determine if, which ones we would want to put back in, or... So if, if you would oblige me for a moment, and then I, I certainly will...
We won't get anywhere piecemeal if we, if we try to do a piecemeal, so let's have the entire picture and then deal from that.
Thank you. So in addition, there was much conversation about the adult education. We wanted to provide you with some information that was provided by the Director of Adult Education, Betty McCarron, who is also here this evening, if anyone has any specific questions for her. But there was, reflected in the budget was 147, 311, that for three support staff. Those support staff, because of the way the budget was designed in the past, we showed the grants and all of that, those, those support staff are funded fully by grants. So, so we wanted to make sure that you knew that the total appropriation for the, the adult ed. are for the five full-time teachers and the director at $500,088.3. In addition, the way that, that at the state and federal level, adult ed. competes for matching funds from the Department of Elementary and Education. So they've been really successful because of the, the monies that are provided from the schools to be able to get additional funding, to bring in enough to educate over 1,800 adults yearly. So, but if you would like some, any other specific information, as I mentioned, Ms. McCarron is here this evening, but I just wanted to clarify that, and I thank her for bringing that to our attention. So lastly, there was a request for some information around special education team models. And currently, our special education teams support two or three buildings each, and therefore, schools only receive building-based support from the special ed. team a few days per week, based on the number of schools and their caseload. So when we talked about building-based models, this is not truly a building-based model. And Ms. McCarr, Ms. Dykes is here this evening, and she can, she can share with you the thoughts around bringing the team back to a district-based model, which Worcester and Brockton has done, and she can speak to what's transpired, if you wish to have her address you this evening.
Do you require that information?
Hello all, good evening. Thank you so much for asking me to be here, and if you wouldn't mind indulging me just for a second, because I'm usually here a little bit more often than I have been this year, so I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all and celebrate some of the really good things that are happening in this district. And one of them was actually a direct result of our administrative leadership. And so a few years ago, when we had our administrative leadership, we had a class that was taught by a University of Lowell professor, and there are three of us that just finished our doctorate program, thanks to the start of that work. So in this district, we now have Dr. Matt Stahl, the principal of the Wang, Dr. Deanna Stanford, who is a teacher at Lowell High School, and myself. And I just think that was an amazing opportunity, just afforded to the, the staff that work in Lowell, and I think it was a great accomplishment and, and something to thank you all for in the administration for providing opportunities for people to do that. So I do want to say, in terms of, of the models, and I will get into that, the special ed. staff has worked so tremendously hard over the past few years to really build capacity and put students and families first. And you guys have heard a lot of the results of that work that come from them working together and supporting all students, not just special ed. students. It really is about all education, not just special education. And so one of those things has been the addition of the 80-day school, which has been huge. And to keep on your radar, I think planning forward, because we're always looking at that five-year plan, we're going to need to be talking about lease and what our next steps are with that school. And so knowing that our, our teams have really worked hard and, and been together to continue to build capacity, they've worked very hard on our reading committee, which you all have heard about. They've also done a ton of training around evaluations, and what are appropriate evaluations, and how do we move forward in a way that is appropriate within the law? And we most certainly don't want to lose any of this good work that they have done because they are our experts, and they are taking our district very, very far. So when we were told to make some cuts from our department, it was, it was not done lightly. As I know for all of you, none of these cuts are done lightly, nor by the administration. And so when we looked at it, we had already lost two clerks and an assistant special education administrator, and we know that our class sizes and our sub-separate programs are going to be extraordinarily high starting the year. We felt that in good faith, as many of you have all said, we, we didn't have a social worker that we could cut. And so we made the recommendation based on what we thought may be open positions, so that no one would lose a job. But every job they do is very important, just as every job you're talking about is very important. And they really do work together as a team, because so many of their skills overlap. And like school psychologists, not only evaluate students, but they consult, they could do counseling, they have done a tremendous amount of training in this district. Our BCBAs are able to work with our social workers and collect data on students' behavior and, and to help write support plans. All of the members of the team, including the ETCs, help to do, collect data from parents and do outreach and support staff in buildings. When the district decided to go to a building-based model several years ago, they took the staff that we had and put them in buildings. They are not a true building-based model because they all focus in more than one building. So there is one ETC, for example, who covers three buildings. Our BCBAs cover two or three buildings. Our psychologists cover, everyone covers at least two or three buildings. So buildings are getting one or two days of support, maybe three, but it's not the consistent support envisioned in a true building-based model. And I think there's great value in the building-based model. I think there's a lot to be had from that in terms of knowing teachers, knowing students and families, being able to work with the administration. But to make it work, it needs to be staffed appropriately, and it needs appropriate oversight. So for example, everyone needs to have, to buy in and know that sometimes there are going to be personal disagreements about what's right, but the team has to follow the law. And so although a building may say, we want to shut our doors and, and just do what we think we can do for students, the team has regulations and laws that they need to follow, and, and we can't be switching teams when they're building relationships because people are having personal disagreements, because then that disrupts other teams. So I think there is huge value in it, and I think it's a, something this district needs to consider. Do they want to move forward with that model? Will it be staffed appropriately and have appropriate oversight, so that each building does have some individual play, but also there's equity, so that, you know, some teams have really nice office spaces, some do not. Some have administrative meetings every week for a couple hours, some only meet once a month, if at all. So there needs to be some, some equity around that, allowing for some individualization. The way the central-based model came up, and I think there is great value in the centrally-based model for the evaluation team chairpersons. As we've talked a couple of years ago about Brockton and Worcester being kind of on the cutting edge of, of that suit and all of this, they also have pulled back their ETCs so that they can align their practice and make sure that everybody is following the law, has the same approach, and there isn't that variation, because their job really is compliance. Their job is to look at the data and make recommendations. And so my recommendation for making the ETCs centrally-based was if there was a cut to them, they cannot maintain compliance with their current staffing and still be building-based if we cut one. It's just impossible, because right now, we are having other people sign IEPs to keep in compliance, and to lose one of them, they won't be able to do it. So if they were centrally-based, they'd be closer to their clerks, they would have more time to write, because right now, every teacher knocks on their door and is asking for help. They may be helping with scheduling, or helping with children, or doing something in the building, all of which has value. But their job is the compliance, and if we're going to lose one, we can't lose the compliance piece. So that's where that recommendation came from. No matter what happens, and hopefully with extra money, those positions will be reinstated, I do think it's of tremendous value for this district to spend a year really looking at the models that are out there and their effectiveness and why, and figuring out why places like Brockton and Worcester have brought their ETCs back and the value of that. What was the cost? What was lost? Because there is a cost to bringing them back, which we had talked to the admin team, that they would need parking passes and phones and desks. And we would need to have conversations with the school psychologists and the ETCs around, how do they not lose their connection to each other? Because right now, they function very much as a team, and if the ETCs are back, what happens with those relationships? And so I think that as... And so I think that as we go forward in terms of doing what this district has always done that I have been so proud of is to really look at best practice, building capacity and being strategic with all of our stakeholders to really root in the data and be transparent about what we want to do and why. And so again, I just wanted to clarify, I do think that there's value in it. I think there's value in both models, but we can't maintain a building-based model with one less ETCs for the ETCs. They just can't get the work done.
Thank you.
So that was my...
Madam Superintendent.
So I just want to clarify too, in speaking with Ms. Styes, she did stipulate that even this year, the staffing the way it is, that she has looked carefully at the district-wide model to bring back because of the staffing levels the way they are. So I don't think it's just because of these recommendations here, based on what you had said, that there are some real value.
Oh, there is definitely value in bringing the ETCs back in terms of aligning practice around making sure that we're following the law and that we are doing some of those pieces. I absolutely agree with that. I just, I think no matter what we do, if that's a decision to bring them back, then it's a year of still collecting data. How does that impact compliance? How are we making, are we making the difference that we need to make? But that's really why, right now, this district has a foot in each model, which doesn't necessarily make sense. And I do also just want to clarify because I know that the psychologists had talked about like a 700, a 500 to 700 caseload. That's if we're using them to their full training and capacity, which includes counseling and all of those other pieces, which they're not currently doing in this district, especially because they can't because we don't have one in every school. And so I think that, again, it would be great for a year to really look at with the unions, with all the stakeholders, with the administration, what are our job descriptions and how are we making sure that we're making the most of everybody's skill set so that everybody has the right amount of support.
All right, thank you. At this point, just any questions for us, Madam Superintendent? Any questions from the committee regarding this matter?
Thank you all.
So at this point, I'd ask Ms. Turner to share with you some of the changes you may see reflected in the budget and then also to share some of our thoughts around the pending potential funds that are coming forward and some recommendations that we might make.
So first, I wanted to recap some of the changes you'll see in the budget document, which is still in draft form until we decide on where we're going to add and cut. As you know, we have the position control and that's going to be important because of all the stuff that we're hearing. As you know, we've agreed that no one wants to cut the music teachers. As you know, we know that we need more mental health professionals and that, you know, one person last time mentioned a recommended caseload. Well, there's also recommended class sizes that we're far exceeding. So unfortunately, when you look at the budget as a whole, as the budget person, I see, where do we cut then? Because if we cut the teachers, the teachers are the ones that have to teach the kids how to read and they have to teach them how to write. The parents, the tutors, those are classroom support people. When we talk about supplies, we don't want to cut phys ed, I mean athletic supplies or music supplies, but guess what? We only have $5,000 for an entire district in reading supplies. So my point is, these are very, I don't think anyone understands that when you look at it as a whole, we cannot continue to keep on building other areas and not have the very mission of our school district. We have to educate the kids. So unfortunately, it would be utopia to continue to fully do the recommended caseloads and all, but we have to do what we are here for. We have to have classes and teachers. So I just wanted to point that out. The position control that I developed, it's going to show how many we have, how many class, you know, how many students in a class. It's going to show that we don't have enough people to do the actual teaching literacy. So I just wanted to point that out. I also wanted to point out another major change in the budget is to have the data in the body of the document so that you have your staff salaries and you don't have to flip through. Another thing that happened, one of the handouts that were given out is called the Department of Ed's chart of accounts. The budget, I reorged it because unfortunately, your budget codes are built so that the government can compare data apples to apples. If a math resource teacher is listed as a teacher here, but as a professional coach in another district, we're not really comparing apples to apples. So what I did, our budget the way it was, had teachers scattered throughout or parents scattered throughout. So how would, oh, I'll give you a perfect example. Music band, you would, if you saw music band cut in the instructional program, you wouldn't realize how it's not equitable if athletics is never cut. By lumping things together based upon the Department of Ed function codes, you start to see what you're doing. So what I did is I took that chart of accounts that you have and I made our budget match that. Some of the main things would include, the math resource teachers are actually coaches that coach other teachers. They belong in the 2350 professional development series, not teachers, they're not instruction. The band should not be an instruction, it should be under student activities alongside the athletics. Teachers were scattered and now they're all on one page so you can see all of our teachers. Special ed tuition was under 2,300 as a regular instruction code and now it's under 9,000 based upon the chart of accounts that you have. Some of the main categories, instead of the, prior to this change, you would see things based on programmatic, like adult ed, audiovisual. Now you're going to see things based upon the Department of Ed chart of accounts, which is 1,000 series is your administration, 2,000 series are all your instructional costs, 3,000 series are all your pupil services, 4,000 series are all facilities, employee benefits would be the 5,000 series, and so forth. So that's all in your packet. I wanted to point out that now that we did redesign that, Ms. Lay, you had requested a printout of Munis report that would show detail that matched the budget. If you enter the budget based upon the Department of Ed's recommended chart of accounts, when I print the report, it will now look just like the budget that we adopt. Also, when we do it this way, at the end of the year, I will print out a report that will flow easily into the end-of-the-year report financials that we have to provide the government because we're going to use their codes. So I just wanted to point those out. I wanted to point out that the new budget that you have in front of you shows three columns at the end. And what I tried to do, just so you could see the flow of how, you know, how we keep going back and forth, it has submission one, which was the May 1 submission, column, yeah, eight, May 6, and then one for today. The one for today is going to fluctuate based upon what we decide together. I'm just going to quickly give a quick recap. When I came on May 1, some of the changes that you would have seen would have been payroll increases and other adjustments based on the actuals from Munis. I wanted to do, give you a disclaimer and point out that I have mentioned in the past that when we print out a report from Munis, often you'll see the same person listed twice, things like that, very confusing. That's another reason why the position control is so important. I need to focus on positions and not the people because I'm, I mean, until we clean up the data, I have to just make sure that we're not padding an account or cheating an account. So the first submission had all kinds of payroll increases and adjustments. The disclaimer that I was about to say is that even if there's someone in Munis and it doesn't match the salary grids, I would find the closest salary grid, put that amount just to make sure we have sufficient funds and we're having that verified by HR payroll. We're working to clean that system up. But in the meantime, I just want to make sure our budget is adequately funded. Other things that were included in submission one was replenishing some of the accounts that had been reduced for this year only, like advertising, stipends, things like that. Reduction of one-time audit accounts, recruitment expense, replenish the internet service provider account. We have to add money for the photocopiers because that is a basic thing that the schools need and you, we don't even think of that as important, but this is an example of when you're looking at the budget as a whole, when we're adding, 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 we need to be able to make photocopiers. So we reduced two ETCs, we reduced the band teachers, we reduced one BCBA, we replenished some of the substitute lines, we reduced by two social workers, one psychologist, we added back a caseworker at the bridge, we increased transportation, and we replenished some of our facility accounts without the unavailable offsets. The second submission, we adjusted the mistakes, for instance. The bridge principal was listed twice in our printout, so we found $100,000 right there. So we adjusted teachers such as moving math teachers to MIT coaches. We added back one of the four band teachers since it was a prorated music teacher shared with the high school. I'm sorry, I cannot see anymore, but we adjusted, we adjusted the special ed teacher line because the special, oh, thank you. Let's see, oh my God. We adjusted the special ed teacher line because it included the hearing and vision teachers that were listed below it, so that was another savings. So those type of adjustments were made. We also did another increase to transportation based on other projections. We're working together as a team. If we don't increase the class, I mean, the classes at the day school, we'll end up having to increase transportation because the students will go out of district. So everything has like a residual effect. And then we found one formula error. So those are some of the things you would see in that second, second to last column, May 6. The third submission, which is today, we adjusted tech accounts. So again, by going over this chart of accounts, the chart of account list, the director of technology was able to reassign where costs should be charged based upon whether it's instructional or district-wide. So you'll see some changes with that. It does not mean we drastically cut technology, we need technology, so we weren't trying to cut it, it's just that the expenses have gone to other accounts in technology. We replenished the internet service provider account, we moved, we added 90,000 for speech-language considerations, we added the CODA and the SLPA, which is the speech-language pathologist assistant, I think. So, okay. We reduced the stipends for PLC again with hopes for grant coverage. We adjusted the nurse account because the budget had five, we were paying seven, and these are the things that we face and we try to clean them up as we go. We corrected an error in the district support specialist line, there were, there was money, we found money. There was, we only have three in the district and there were five in there and they, I guess it was cut during the transition and we weren't aware of that, so it was a good catch. We also, as the superintendent mentioned, the adult ed line included grant funds, not our grant, because otherwise we would have had to keep it there because our line, I mean, that column includes grant offsets and general fund. It's their grant, so we were able to, we got to take that out. So that was a savings right there. The other thing is that we made other adjustments. But here's the thing, at the last meeting, we talked about if we wanted to reinstate the three band teachers, if we wanted to add back a BCBA, an ETC, and a psychologist, that would cost us 570,000. The one thing, when you're looking at a budget as a whole and you're the one up here, you understand that every time we add something back, there's nowhere, we don't have cushions. So there's nowhere, that means we have to cut somewhere else. So here's your choices. You could, we could either leave these out of the budget, knowing that we may get additional money and then that would, they could be reinstated. Or, because I know how hard it must be for you and I also don't want to cause undue stress to the people that would get cut, if you know those are going to be reinstated, what I do, I could suggest, and this is bad accounting, but I'm just, I'm trying to sympathize with you and the people, we do know that, we do feel confident that we're going to get the funds. So rather than cut people, cause alarm, we could just cut the out-of-district 5%, don't get alarmed. We could cut the 5% increase for out-of-district tuition and we can cut the increase to transportation, knowing that that will save us from doing the cuts that you don't feel comfortable with. But yet, we know that when we get those additional funds, we can replenish those accounts. So to save you from having to do the, you know, the back-and-forth seesaw stuff. So you, it's up to you, it's up to you whether you want to be conservative or...
We've spent some time on, just trying to provide some information so this committee can make a reasonable decision. So basically, what, if you look at it, one is you make the cuts and if the money comes back, working with the administration, we can bring every, all the positions back. Or you take a step and, you know, it's, you know, it's a, I would say it's 80 to 90% possibility that we'll get the money, but there's also a chance that whatever could happen, could happen. But the issue is, the school, the school committee has some choices, but the thing is, we can, we talked about how hard they've worked on the budget as a group to bring this together and rather than try to nitpick, but the thing is, we got some, we'll say, major decisions that we can make. And the decision would be put them back in and hope the money comes in or wait till the money's actually in hand. Mr. Howard, you had your hand up.
Yes, I believe they've done a great job, Mayor, but the concerns I have is, I remember we had a list of spots, things we left out and we were going to make a priority list and I don't think we have really finished that. But to me, there's a few issues that I have, and there's only a few, would be, we've been waiting for a few years on a student service specialist at the freshman academy to replace that. I know that's in that group of lists and I think, one that I've recently learned, and it's just that when the budget comes, you always want to call your best friends and the ones that know, I think, what goes on more than I do with a budget. But at the high school, a place that I have a lot of concerns for, I think we're in desperate need of a director of curriculum and instruction and I think we should put them in that list also, when we do get money, to make sure we might be able to... I know, we didn't finalize it yet, Mayor, where the priority list is, but I think we have to go over that.
But that's a, that's a point. I mean, that's what's expected money, but the thing is, it's the procedure that we would do. I understand what you're saying.
And the last thing I want to say, Mayor, is this, I am in charge of the athletics subcommittee and we're going to take $10,000 away from that account. You've got 35 different sports, roughly 72 teams. I think you're supposed to, if my numbers are right, I think we're supposed to spend about 1.5% of our budget on the athletic department. And that's what, if you look at schools around us, surrounding towns, Barrika, Chansford, all those, and I know they get fees, they charge people to use the sports, I know all of that. But for a system that's this big, to cut anything out of the athletic department right now, I know we've been busy, but the middle schools, and I know now I'm going to have to have a subcommittee, I'm going to have to put a motion in pretty soon to have a subcommittee to talk about these issues, but just a few things I've learned this week, and this, I'll be done in about a minute, Mayor, but this might have to do with the city more than it does the schools. One of the, one of the basketball courts that you can pull a cord and it folds back up into the ceiling, well, it's broke, it broke. And if you go out to get a price on it, it's about $900 roughly to fix it.
Where?
At the high school. So my point is though, I think the city should be fixing that. It's really a maintenance issue, but yet, our athletic department is the one that's going to have to pay for that $900 worth of damage or the broken thing that's probably 30, 35 years old. They can't afford to take that kind of money out of that budget. And I just want my colleagues to know, it's only $10,000. I don't know if we have anything in the suspense account or whatever, but if we think we can take money out of the athletic department, I think we're fooling ourselves. And that's all I have to say. And I agree with most of this budget, I think you've done a great job, but that kind of, that issue bothers me just a little bit. Thank you.
Any comments?
So I wanted to say that...
From the committee, any, okay. Your, Ms. Turner, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. I agree with you, but this is unfortunately what I meant when I said...
Um, I agree with you, but this is unfortunately what I meant when I said, seeing it from the bird's eye view, I know as someone that's doing the athletics that it seems impactful, but do you know that we spend several hundred dollars per child on football, but we spend the equivalent of one pencil on each child for reading? So my thing is, we are a school system, and even though I am all my, I am a sports mom, my kids have played sports their entire lives, three a year, so I get it, it's just that there's no funds. As a matter of fact, we all love the teachers, right? They're the ones that are educating our children. Do you know I don't have anyone to help them with retirement? We are, we're piecemailing people, we're pulling people, so these teachers that have served us for thirty years and raised our children with us, they don't even, they can't walk in, they can't retire peacefully, they have to, it's almost like they must feel like they're begging us to get their retirement application, not because we don't want to help them, but because we don't have anyone in HR. So my point to you is, I understand that ten thousand dollars, it might seem like that, but, you know, the music program, they weren't even, they didn't even get the same raises all along that the other coaches were getting. So, there's a lot of things that we're looking at from a bird's eye view, and so even though each of us has, we all have something that's important to us, but when you look at it from up here, and you say, "We have to teach reading and math, and we're not, we don't have money for it," when we're looking at the curriculum woman and saying, "By the way, we have to make sure that we have all these positions over here, and we, the athletics and this," but we don't have enough money for curriculum. I mean, it's just...
Thank you. I, I, I think the, the issue is, you raised some fine points, everybody's raising, you know, correct points, and the administration's doing what they're supposed to do, make us aware of, of the problems that we create for them. But I think at this point, if we can get through this budget, and, uh, the amount of money that we hope comes into the city, I think we have to look at it very carefully, how we spend the money, and, and what programs are important to us, and, and the thing is, everybody here, every committee person, you know, has an idea of some issues that they want to raise, the administration themselves. So the question is, can we go through this budget? And so the choices are, you know, if and when the money comes in, make those choices, establish a priority list, do, I mean, for budget procedures, the chair of the budget process should, you know, have, work, would have some input in, with the administration as to how the money would be looked at. Chair of personnel, the issue is, in working with personnel, you know, what monies we have, what are the real priorities? Is it special ed, is it bilingual education, is it the reading programs? I mean, these are things we all have, a music program that, that we have an interest in. So I think we, we can be careful at this point, and I think the direction is, there's gonna be more funding, but I'd like to get through this budget. And so it's a, it's a process of even making some changes and making a guess and taking five percent out of a couple of, you know, areas, which is not a really great process, but the thing is, but it's something that can be done. You have, you have alternatives, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Senate, they're gonna start working on their budget next week, so I don't think it's gonna be that long before we know...
Well, the thing is, it, but it has to go, they have to have, it has to go for a hearing, then they have to, you know, meet with the House, and it could be actually after July, or into July, when the actual budget amount comes. You're correct, you know, the Senate's really, uh, registered what they want to give us and what they do, but till the money's actually in our hand.
Can I keep going?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, and I'm glad that Ms. Turner said that, you know, it's difficult to read, because I keep, I said the same thing, the funds too small, and, and the school model that, that you made is too small for me to follow, so I had to make the enlargement and try to follow, it's still difficult to follow. So I don't know if, um, if we could have a, a soft copy, so that we could at least go to our screen and expand it, I don't know if that helps or not, but I, I have a hard time following. Plus, you know, you gave a, a package each week, I came home, I tried to follow it, and now when we come to the meeting, we don't even use that, we have a, another package to follow. Um, so that's just made my, my, um, I just want to tell you that's difficult for me to, to follow. And, um, when you mentioned the quarterly report, um, I wonder if we haven't received any of those quarterly, quarterly reports, and the request was to, for, for, for the school committee to look at, and I'm wondering if you could, uh, give us those reports.
Yes.
Thank you.
You asked that, Ms. Turner? I'm sorry.
So, as a matter of fact, I heard from the city auditor today, and he said to make sure that I put it on the agenda come, um, quarterly now, because he provided a report. What I was saying is, we're cleaning up Munis, so that it would print out and look like the budget, so that you could follow along easily. And as far as the materials that you have, I do think that you should have an electronic copy when it's all said and done, it's very...
You do, he does, he's doing now, it's loaded.
It's very difficult to get a lot of data, I mean, we're a huge district, so when you're doing these visuals, that's why I tried to do the visual for you, because it's a lot of data, and it's a lot of, you know, um, things to follow along. As far as the different packets that you are getting, when we have the final budget, it's going to be all updated, and you'll have a complete package, you won't even have to look at all the drafts. You'll have a nice narrative that explains exactly how to follow along. And, um, I wanted to point out, too, that we do, we did come up with additional cuts, but we wouldn't want to discuss those and alarm people if we really didn't have to. One of the things that I was suggesting, like I said, if we think of the transportation or the out-of-district, I happen to know we're rewriting those grants, and I'm a very conservative, frugal person, so I'm still thinking, we're gonna save three hundred thousand dollars right from that, on top of the additional funds that we're getting. That's giving up the pockets, like I said, as an accountant, we usually try to keep some nest, you know, something to, in case there's emergencies. I'd rather go through that with you, rather than cut in people unnecessarily. So, I do think that between the potential funds we would get from the Senate, and the potential funds we're going to save with the grants, that I would feel safe to, you know, re, you think of not, you know, like, like, like the mayor said, consider...
Five seventy.
Yes, the five, you know, five seventy coming out of, out of district.
Okay. Ms. Lay, you finish?
Thank you. So, uh, for those reports, I understood that the city auditor already sent you two reports, and those were supposed to be for a school committee to look at, uh, that's, that's not so?
No, from my understanding, I believe he might've, he sent one today, but it wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't bring it.
Aye.
But it can come next time. If he did, and I'm not saying that he didn't, because he, I don't think he would have a reason to not, but maybe he sent it and it's...
The report went to the city council.
Right, it went to the city council, but it didn't, if it came to me, I wasn't aware of it.
But the, but the issue is, we want him beginning to work with the CFO to get that report to the school committee also.
If, if he did send...
That will fall, he didn't, he sent it to the city council, so the thing is, we're supposed to have the CFO work together with the auditor to get it to the school committee. So it's in process, it's on the way.
From what I understood, he sent two reports in the past, and somehow, you got it or not, I don't know, but, um, if you did, if, if have, if you happened to have it, have them, uh, I, I think we, I'd like to ask to have them before our next meeting, so we can at least see them. Thank you.
If I didn't receive it, I could definitely go and, um, you know, ask him to resend it, because I most certainly would love to share that with you. The more that you know, the easier my job becomes, so I'll make sure I follow up with him and see if he sent it to me.
And I'm saying, you'll get it. Okay, Mr. Hoi?
You just, um, I was gonna hit the, uh, city auditor, 'cause we did put a motion in for him to give us a quarterly report, and hopefully that's what they're doing. Uh, but just real quick through you, Mayor, to Ms. Durkin, um, getting back just for a minute to the HR director, I know you told us last night at the meeting where we stand, but have been very busy. I'm curious where we do stand, has anybody, you know, do you think you're getting close to finding someone, uh? I know you told us last night, but just clarify it a little bit for me. Thank you.
We actually went through the process, we had search committees, um, identify four finalists, then we met with them, and we identified those that we liked, and we made offers, and the negotiations fell through because, you know, either, whatever reason, they might've taken another job that was more money, whatever it may be. So what we did is, we asked the recruiter to go back out, um, you know, go back to the, and get us some more applicants, so that we get, you know, a, a good, we can say, come back to you and say that we really did a thorough job of trying to get the best person. We, we had a couple of great candidates, but unfortunately, it's a competitive market, and people are going elsewhere, so...
Thank you. Just want to touch on a couple of quick things. At, at one of the previous, um, finance subcommittees, we talked about the fact that, um, the CFO was trying to clean up Munis, and that to, to make the report match with the auditor's report, and the auditor does publish a report to the city council, it is published on the, um, city website, and Mr. Lay and anyone else can easily access that. Um, and that's why we haven't received it, because we were waiting for it to be, to be cleaned up.
But we've talked in the past, and the best process is to, you know, try to get...
We, we all, you know, it, it is never easy to do a budget, it is never easy to come up with cuts. You, uh, you made a statement that we have to educate the kids. I could use that in my continuing effort to say, why do we continue to fund adults over children? But I couldn't even get a second, so it's not gonna go anywhere. At this point, and, and to move the budget forward, and to move the meeting forward, I think we should take, based on the number that we have to deal with, which is the, the budget that's presented, and hope that the state money, additional money comes in, and we've been, all of us have been talking to people, and the hope is, we're gonna get somewhere between one and three million dollars more, when the Senate and the House joint committee, but we've seen the last two years, that hasn't happened until July. So we can't, we can't approve a budget higher than what the city council and the city manager has presented to us, which is the budget that you're presenting to us tonight. So I'd like to make a motion to follow your recommendation to cut the increase in transportation and out-of-district, leave all the positions that were recommended, leave the band, leave the, everybody that, that we were gonna cut, leave them in place, and just take those cuts that, from, from the additional transportation, and then relook at things when we have a final number, and, and as Mr. Hoi said, then we can look at the list that we had come up with last year, and priority list, and see what we want to do.
A second, Mr. Jacoto, roll call.
Wait a minute, I think, I think they want some clarification from that.
I just wanted to clarify that when I said the five hundred and seventy thousand, that was to reinstate the three band teachers, one ETC, not two, one psychologist, and one BCBA, which means that it still would, um, have certain positions out. Um, I just wanted to clarify that, and because, just so you know, that if we do put everything back in, then we lose the, if we don't get the funding, we won't have the opportunity to eliminate the positions without violating the union rules.
So what, what positions do we end up eliminating?
The, um, um, so that would be, one ETC would still be out of the budget, and the two social workers, which were the attrition ones, any?
Again, for now, I think we live with that, exactly.
Okay, second, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Jacoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, can we go to the budget? All right, the first...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, since we all just agreed on everything, do we really need to go page by page, or can we just go to that final number, as the budget's been presented to us, and save us all a little bit of time?
I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, but the thing is, with the TV audience, should we just, so they'll know the amounts?
I don't think they really, no, no offense, but, you know, I, I, I just think it's, we've already agreed what the cuts are gonna be, the budget has intact, we can vote for the final number, I believe.
No, I, I think, I think... The request is a reasonable request, I mean, at, at this particular point, and we do have to come back to this budget. We can't add to this budget at this particular point, we put in the positions that, uh, the best we can at, at this particular point, and the rest is having to wait, and we know what we're waiting for. And the issues, I, in going over, there was nothing that I saw on this budget that, you know, was not answered by central administration, so... Madam Superintendent?
So the only, um, the only question I have for the body is, do we need to go over specifically the, the pages that we're changing? Um, so that impacts the transportation, it impacts the, um, it impacts our out-of-district, and then, um, putting back? I, I don't know, it's just...
You know, the, the motion was made, you know, to accept the changes that were made. So, and it would be just another... Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we, we should go through at least to the superintendent's opinion, uh, that if we wait until we go through everything at the end, I think maybe that's too long, if we, if we do some of it now.
Well, the thing is, what, what, what we're gonna do is just accept the money that's been given by the, city, assigned by the city. We, everything's been fixed and adjusted by the central office, and any changes that will be made afterwards will be with, with the new funds.
At, at least shouldn't we go through the, the one we just changed, you know?
No, Mr. Nutter?
I'm gonna make a formal motion to approve the Lowell Public Schools fiscal 2020 final bottom line figure of a hundred and eighty-eight million, nine hundred and eight thousand and twenty-eight dollars to be submitted to the city manager.
I need a second, by Mr. Hoi, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Jacoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Yes, Mr. Nutter.
Through you to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, would you, after you make the adjustments, please provide us with an up-to-date budget? Thank you.
And, and the issue is, uh, Mr. Hoi brought up about the list, about, you know, any, if we were to have a dramatic increase in, in salary, Madam Superintendent, so, yes, go ahead.
We'll, we'll compile the list that was the priority list from the committee from the 2019 budget, that we provided you, uh, at the last meeting, and we'll also, uh, bring forward some of our additional recommendations.
That meet your approval? Mr. Lay?
I have one more thing to, that I'd like to ask, Mayor. Um, I know we are working on the budget, uh, but, um, last, a couple of meetings ago, I have asked if we have a line item for the translation. Uh, it is a, uh, a service that will serve a two-thirds of our students' body, and I know the budget is tight, uh, and I'm asking if we should at least put a line item for the discussion.
Madam Superintendent?
We can certainly, uh, add the line with a zero balance, we'll do that, we'll make sure it happens, and just, um, just to remind you that we did add that to the priority list the last time we brought it forward to you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent, for that, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, through you to the administrative team. I'm looking at the F-1920 budget priority list that you gave us, I see Mr. Lay's item is on there about translation. What I don't see on here, and, and maybe we didn't formally add it last year, is the Lowell High School Director of Curriculum position. I know that position was not funded when, um, Ms. McLeod left the district, we didn't, um, but is that on the list? Because I think it is an important role.
That was never on the priority list. I know that I, um, actually re-watched the school committee meetings, um, went through all the notes, that was not the school committee's priority list at the time, so, um, but...
Could, could I make a motion to add the, just to add it to the list, because I think it is, you know, so my motion would be to add the Lowell High School Director of Curriculum role onto our budget priority list.
Second, by Mr. Hoi. Second by Mr. Hoi. All in favor? All right, I, I want to thank the committee, and I want to thank the administration for the work that they've done. Our job, our work is not finished until we get the bottom-line figure, but we know where we are at this particular point, and, uh, when that information comes in, we'll act accordingly. So, thank you, everybody. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Jacoto. I must forget that.
We forgot that.